I'd like to call to order the June 1st, 2020 Bayport City Council meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, one nation.
Under.
Indivisible, indivisible, just for all.
Oh, alright. Triplicate. Good evening, everyone. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mayor St. Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember Hansen.
Here.
Councilmember Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Dahl.
Present.
All present.
Excellent. Okay, that takes us to the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or additions? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Connie, is there a second?
I will second it.
Thank you, John Dahl. Adam?
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley.
Aye.
Mayor St. Norris.
Aye.
As all.
That takes us to our Proclamations, Commendations, Petitions, and Announcements. And we have an April/May recycling award recipients. The first is Katie Earlbeck and Jennifer Hedkey. And they will be awarded for their recycling efforts with funding made possible by a grant from Washington County. So thank you very much, Katie and Jennifer, for your recycling. That takes us to tonight's consent agenda where we'll consider resolution adopting items one through seven. Number one, April 16th, 2020 City Council Workshop Minutes. May 4th, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes. May Payables and Receipts. May Building Plumbing Mechanical and Zoning Permits Report. City Infrastructure Utility Easement for 338 Fifth Avenue North. Authorization to Replace Existing Speed Sign. And a Special Event Application from the Bayport American Legion for a Flag Day Burning Ceremony at Pearl Park on June 14th, 2020. Anyone have any questions, comments, or additions to the consent agenda?
Mayor?
If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I think Adam had something.
Mayor, I just have one comment on the Flag Day event that's typically open to the public. This year, it is not open to the public. The American Legion is holding it at Pearl Park, but due to the COVID restrictions, it is a closed event.
Okay, thank you very much. If that's the only comment or change, then would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I moved to approve the consent agenda. I made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Michelle, is there a second?
Second it.
Thank you, John. Buckley. Adam.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Mayor St. Norris.
Aye.
As all.
Before we move on, I'm sorry, I know this is a little out of order. So for the speed limit sign, I noticed unless I missed it again, that was just for the actual sign itself, not installation.
Councilmember Dahl, that is, it's authorizing the sign along with the price, the cost of the installation is noted there in the memo.
Why do I not ever see it? I see what says does not include installation.
The.
The memo mentions that installation work is estimated to be approximately $1675 at the, under the recommendation.
Oh, I was looking at their actual quote. I guess I never understand why they're not on there.
Right.
It seems odd to me.
Councilor Dahl, they, the sign company does not do the installation, unless we had to get an electrical contractor.
Alright, okay. Sorry about that. Thank you. Seems reasonable.
Very good. Excellent. Okay. Um, so then we'll move on with the presentation of the 2019 city audit. And we have Ryan here to visiting us this evening. So welcome, Ryan. And we'll hand the mic over to you.
Thank you. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna share my screen with you here and walk through my presentation that way. But it looks like I'm actually getting a message that says the host has disabled participant screen sharing. Is there a way to enable that maybe?
Well, Adam.
Adam, you're muted.
Adam?
I am adjusting that. Yeah, I actually had a presentation two hours ago and the same thing happened, so.
Must be the default.
Yep, must be, yep.
Is it appearing for you yet?
No, not yet. Still getting the same message.
I'm listening in. I'm just gonna go to the other room and grab my, uh, booklet.
Average?
Sure.
No.
Booklet, the finance report.
Yeah, I left mine in the other room too, but I don't know if I need it if there's a presentation.
Says that it's on. Oh, there, there, it just popped up for me. Yep, we should be good now. Awesome. Thanks, Adam. Alright, can everybody see that now?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
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 Perfect, perfect. Yeah, so I've actually done quite a few of these remotely now. And it's kind of slick because I can walk right through the presentation and I can kind of point to things that I'm talking about. So, um, yeah. Works out okay, believe it or not, as long as the internet connection's good. Alright, so moving into the first page here. Well, for starters, my name's Ryan Schmidt. I'm a senior manager with Schlener, Wetter &amp; Company. I believe I presented to you for a number of years now. So if we walk into our presentation here, we're gonna be going through the overall results of the 2019 audit. Kind of looking at this high level, looking at the high points of the overall large audited financial statement packet that we do provide you here. So first page here, we're just gonna talk about what do we do during the audit from a really high level? What does an audit consist of? So basically, an audit is us obtaining your financial data and your financial records and activity from the past year, 2019, and performing a number of procedures such as various inquiries with management, third parties, various analytics where we develop expectations for what we would think your revenues and expenses and balances might be, and then comparing that to actual. Various sampling procedures and lots and lots of detailed testing, you know, confirmations with third parties, review of invoices, et cetera. Based on all of this information that we gather, we're able to express an opinion on whether or not we feel your financials are accurate. And the opinion that we've expressed this year is what's called an unmodified opinion. So that's a clean opinion, the best you can hope for. Okay, next page here. We've got just some other required communications about how the audit went. This is where we would let you know if we had any difficulties during the audit, or if we had any struggles getting the information we needed, or if we saw anything strange or unusual that we needed to communicate to you. Difficult estimate in your financial statements. Okay, so this slide here just real quick goes over your other governmental funds. There's a calculation that's done at the end of each year to kind of determine which of your funds are considered major and get their own separate presentation and their separate opinion unit in the financial statements. Based on this calculation, just because of the size of the reserves that you have put away within this water and sewer improvement fund, this fund is considered a major fund that we present separately. And then your other non-major funds here consist of your library fund, your debt service fund, park improvement, drug forfeiture, et cetera. Those all kind of get consolidated, but there are, there is a detailed breakout of each one of these funds in the back pages of the financial statements. Overall, Water and Sewer Improvement Fund, revenue is coming in here from your trunk line fees and investment income, and then no expenditures against here. Most of the activity in this non-major category, about half of it actually relates to the library. And for each of those two categories, this is just cash over the past five years. Kind of a trend of increase in both of these. I think this Water and Sewer Improvement Fund, for a number of years now, you've had those revenues going into this fund, but no expenditures, no corresponding expenditures. So you've been building up a bit of a reserve in this fund. Alright, so two more funds to go through here. We're getting to your proprietary funds, your water and your sewer fund. The first slide here talks about your water fund. Once again, a five-year trend analysis. We've got revenues and operating revenues in the blue compared to your operating expenses. This year, you can see you had quite a decline in your operating expenses, and you actually, as a result, had an income from operations of $29,000. Your revenues did decrease about $34,000, I believe primarily just based on usage and some other factors. But your operating expenses, the big decrease, there was, had less repairs and maintenance than last year by about $100,000, as well as decreases in your compensation. And then also, the pension expense in this fund decreased by about $30,000, which is tied to that, that state number that gets pushed out to you, that liability and how it fluctuates from year to year. So it actually had a positive impact for you in 2019 here. With that, and your non-operating revenue, which is primarily investment income and connection fees, you had an increase in your net position in this fund of $225,000. Ended the year with a net position of about 6.62 million. Next fund, Sewer Fund, similar layout to the previous slide and similar results to report actually too. I guess expenditures held pretty steady in this fund, but you did have a spike in your operating revenues here, which pushed you into having a positive income from operations this year. The biggest increase, or the biggest factor driving this increase in your revenues was additional billings and revenues from the correctional facility and from Anderson Corporation. That with your non-operating miscellaneous revenues brings you to a overall increase in net position in the sewer fund of $152,000. And once again, just the cash over the past five years for both of these funds. You can see you experienced increases in both of these funds. Water fund increased by about $261,000, ended the year at about 2.27 million. Sewer fund increased by about $101,000, ended at about 1.4 million. Okay, so that's it for your individual funds. But if you were to look through your large financial statement packet that we provide you, you'll find a separate set of financials in there as well, called your government-wide or your citywide financials, where we take all of those funds, we wrap them all together, and we put them on the full accrual basis of accounting, kind of similar to how a business or a for-profit entity presents their financials. And this is where we have things like your capital assets. The next slide here is gonna be liabilities. You'll see there's long-term debt. Those accrual balances get presented here. So looking at everything wrapped together, just the assets on this slide, you can see your current assets held pretty steady compared to the prior year. This is cash, short-term receivables, prepaid, miscellaneous, current assets. Whereas your capital assets, so your land, your infrastructure, your equipment and buildings, that's where you're seeing the increase this year. And that's because of those purchases that we talked about when we were looking at the general. The next slide here, however, so I should say, your assets did increase, your capital assets as a result of those items we talked about, but the liabilities actually decreased a little bit. So current liabilities, so what's due to vendors, retainage on construction, that sort of thing, that increased a little bit here. But your debt actually dropped off by a compensating amount here. And then the net pension liability is broken out in green here because honestly, you don't have any control over this. It's just a number provided by the state. You couldn't pay it off even if you wanted to. It's just your proportionate share of the statewide plan's deficit. So that held pretty steady. It actually decreased a little bit. I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, decreased just a little bit from the previous here. And finally, just a brief slide here showing the decline in your debt balance over the past five years of you, as you've been paying off your 2015 A bonds. I apologize, I noticed I don't have dates here, but it's 2019, all the way back to 2015. So it shows you what's happening with your debt. Any questions?
Is there any questions from the council?
No.
No? Neither. It looks, you know, it seems like we're in a positive position. It looks like we did make some significant investments in our future and that we're tracking according to all guidelines. So all very, very positive. I think in an outline item that we're going to discuss later in our agenda, it may help a little bit with our segregation of duties. So we'll be discussing that in a later topic this evening. So maybe diversifying, well, we are definitely diversifying some of the the financial responsibilities within our city staff, so.
Great.
Very good. A final ask of anyone on the council or staff that may have questions? Alright. Adam, I don't believe there's any action that we need to take at this point. I guess we need to accept the city findings as. There's a little bit of a delay between me and you, Adam, so I.
If the council could formally accept the 2019 audit, please.
Okay, sounds good. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll move that we approve the 2019 audit as submitted.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Go for it, John.
Alright, so thank you, John Dahl. Thank you, John Buckley. Adam, please call the roll.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Mayor St. Norris.
Aye.
As all. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Ryan, for your presentation.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing that we have this evening to consider a resolution for a variance to expand an existing legally non-conforming single-family home with a new attached, single-stall garage at 466 Perry Creek Avenue. And I will turn the mic over to Sarah to present this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I do have our gentleman in the audience, so we want to make sure that we have a good sound. Are you good? Okay, great. Please proceed, Sarah.
I think Adam was gonna do a screen share of his. Oh, perfect. Here it goes. Okay, great. So the subject property contains a single-family house that's pictured here, which is surrounded primarily by residential uses and is owned R2 Single Family Urban. Property owner Jeff Oswald has submitted an application for a variance to allow the expansion of the existing house with a new attached, single-stall garage and an asphalt driveway on the north side of the property. The house is considered legally non-conforming because it does not meet the current building setback requirements from the south property line. The zoning allows legally non-conforming structures to continue to be used and be reasonably maintained. However, any alteration, expansion, or improvement beyond normal maintenance requires a variance. While the proposed expansion will increase the footprint of the house, I think it's important to note that it will not increase the non-conformity of the structure or encroachment further into the setback. The south setback for the house will remain at approximately nine feet, which is the setback that currently does not comply with the required 10 feet. The north wall of the house will be extended 14.8 feet to accommodate the new attached garage and result at a setback of five feet. Overall, the expansion will meet all other setback height and impervious coverage requirements. Minnesota statutes establishes criteria by which the city is to consider a variance application, and such criteria includes that practical difficulties exist in complying with the zoning ordinance. As proposed, the property will be used in a reasonable manner. Circumstances unique to the property exist but were not created by the landowner, and the variance, if granted, will not alter the character of the neighborhood. If the variance is determined to meet this criteria, the request for the variance should be granted. Based on this criteria and the reasons stated within the staff report, staff is recommending approval of the variance with the conditions of approval outlined in the resolution, which was included in your agenda packet. Both garage and driveway will provide adequate and necessary off-street parking and indoor storage for vehicles and recreation equipment, both of which do not currently exist at the property. For the record, notice of tonight's public hearing on this variance application was posted and published in the Stillwater Gazette on Friday, May 15, and mailed to property owners within 350 feet of the subject property. The city did not receive any written comments on the application. At this time, I'd be happy to take initial questions from the council prior to opening the public hearing. And the applicant, as noted by the mayor, is also present and available for questions.
Excellent. So, um, at this time, Mr. Oswald, do you want to come and speak to us? We'll have. And I'll put my, my mic on mute so that I don't.
Alright, well, basically, the only thing I want to cover is, uh, me and my family currently have a tough situation where our kids race motocross nationally. It's no longer on the local level anymore. The reason for the garage is to get adequate storage space for the multi-use vehicles that they are running. Currently, they are stored in my basement, which is a very unsafe manner. Not to mention a shed that was permitted a few years ago, which is now filled pretty much to the brim with the same, same equipment. Really, that's the only things that I wanted to cover. You know, I will be, as a licensed residential builder in the state of Minnesota, I will be constructing the garage myself. And obviously, following all the current building codes and things like that to see fit that this garage is done adequately. That's pretty much all that I have.
Susan's still muted.
Sorry about that. Any other questions for Mr. Oswald?
No, I think it looks like a nice project and well-designed and is gonna match the house and seem, you know, it seems like a natural fit for that property. Makes a lot of sense to me.
I agree. I agree. It seems like it's gonna be a great benefit. And when you want to sell the house, it'll have a garage and it'll add value for, for the next owner too. So it's a great idea.
I have no problem with it.
I was.
That's the house my husband grew up in, and they never had a garage, which they hated. So I'm glad to hear someone's putting in a garage.
That's great.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, very good. Um, any, any questions at all? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next portion of our, our public hearing here.
Adam wants to say something.
I also think it looks great.
Oh, sure.
For you and for your.
I was just gonna say, as long as we move on to the public hearing next, that's, we're good.
Okay. Great. Then I'd like to, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move that we open the public hearing.
I will second that.
Adam, do we need, do we need a roll at this point?
Yes. Councilor Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Mayor St. Norris.
Aye.
As all.
Okay, the public hearing is officially open. We do not have any other members in our audiences this evening, except for Mr. Oswald, who we've heard from. Our police officer is checking and there's no one else on the premises. And as Adam or Sarah, we did not hear, if you'd just please confirm one more time that we don't have any other public comment?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Well, then, um, I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public, the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Connie. Adam?
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley. Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mayor St. Norris.
Aye. Okay, so at this time, the city council can engage in any other conversation or discussion regarding this application and pose any other questions. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to discuss on this topic?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Hey, I agree. So with that, would anyone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving a variance to expand an existing legal non-conforming, single-family home at 466 Perry Creek Drive with the facts and conditions as presented by the staff.
Thank you, Connie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I will.
Thank you, Michelle. Adam?
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley.
Aye.
Mayor St. Norris.
Aye.
As all.
Um, it's saying that my battery's running low?
Wait.
Uh, it should be, there's a plug. It should be plugged in under the, is it plugged in in the back?
It said, it says I might want to plug it in. It is not currently plugged in. So give us a moment. Very good, thank you. Not my PC, so, perfect, we're back in business. Okay, so we have, I think everything is all set for Mr. Oswald. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Oswald, thank you so much for coming, and good luck with your project. Thank you. All right, that takes us to our unfinished business. Um, the first item is to consider a statement of conduct of disapproval on behalf of the city council from the April sixteenth, twenty twenty workshop. Adam?
Mayor, uh, this is actually being, uh, attorney Brett.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, uh, hopefully everybody can hear me. Let me know if not. Hope everybody's staying safe, uh, the past few weeks here. Um, I'll be brief on this one. The city council and all, all members of the city council met on a special workshop on April sixteenth, uh, and I was the only non-council member present, so um, I authored the meeting minutes that were adopted on the consent agenda tonight for that workshop and as well as the statement of disapproval. That is before you right now. Uh, as you'll recall, the city council voted four to one, um, to have the statement of disapproval drafted um, and this, and then a three to two vote to have the statement of disapproval attached to the minutes of the workshop. So after this item, the actual record of that meeting will include this, this document. And so I trust that you've had, uh, the ability to read this, uh, back when we met, uh, now a month and a half ago on this. At the time, um, you know, I, I took copious notes and tried to basically incorporate that into the, into this document. Uh, the city council had expressed an interest and intent to base the statement of disapproval on the various, um, email correspondence, uh, that was reviewed at that meeting as well as, as, as on the discussion. So, uh, that, that was the intent of this document. Not meant to be a long, drawn-out thing, um, just a concise, uh, summary of the statement that the council wanted to have published. Um, and it's basically broken up into two sections, the special assessment, um, interest uh, situation where there was the backdated check, and then the general city communication. And then a few recitals at the end. So I, I, I did talk about maybe having this, um, statement, uh, drafted, published, passed around, commented, redlined, uh, some further discussion with um, the city minister on how, on how this was going to be discussed. I didn't want to run afoul of any open meeting law uh, issues here. When, when a document is passed around, that's, that's when those come to the fore often. So wanted to avoid that and make it brief enough that we could have a discussion if the council would like one and have any changes incorporated. If, sorry, I'm having a, I feel like I'm gonna sneeze all the time here. If the council, um, has any changes to this document, we can, we can go through those changes, and if it substantially changes what's here, we can have a separate vote on it. If not, um, I was telling Adam that we really don't need a separate vote on this document. Just, it's just gonna be incorporated and attached to the minutes of the meeting. I do want to say I had a, had a phone call, uh, with Councilmember Buckley today, um, and he offered some clarifying, um, comments to be incorporated into this document, and I'll go through those now with you. Um, and they have to do with the Romanet number two gen, general city communication.
Andy? Andy? I don't think it's clear on what topic we're discussing. So if you could review the actual, I mean, it's been alluded to that, that we're talking about a, a disapproval on behalf of the city council, but there's no information on what's being discussed, actually.
Okay.
So if you could clarify that, that would be great.
So I, I, I'll. And I think I'll, I'll take a step back and, and, um, I think I was trying to motor through this so I wouldn't sneeze all over the place, but I think allergy season for me. And so as the council will, will recall, um, going back, uh, the former city finance officer was, um, uh, resigned in March, and we had a meeting in the middle of March. And then some electronic correspondence came, came up between, um, the city finance officer and Councilmember Buckley around these two items. Number one was, um, the special assessment for the sidewalks. Uh, I don't remember exactly what, it was the twenty nineteen project, where the finance officer suggested that, um, a special assessment bill uh, for some family members of the council member could be, um, turned in and, and the check could be backdated to such an extent that it would not require any interest to be, um, tacked on to that special assessment. Without getting too into the details of that, all right. There's, there's a thirty-day window for not having any interest accruing to, uh, special assessments. And so the check was, the special assessment payoff check was backdated to meet that thirty-day deadline. We talked about that as a staff. Um, I came to the conclusion the city really doesn't have the authority to do something like that. So um, that was, that was the first step. And we had some discussion on that. And at the April meeting, there was a discussion that the family members didn't get an invoice for the special assessments. Um, it was explained that the city doesn't invoice special assessments like it does for, um, water bills, for example. And so it's up to the landowner to figure out the date, uh, to pay that off to not accrue any interest. Uh, and so there was a little bit of a, of an ethical situation with the finance officer to allow for that to be backdated. Um, and that was what we discussed, um, on the first step. Or, sorry, on the first item. The second item was the general tone of the email communications um, between the former finance officer and the council member on various city issues, whether it be personnel issues, um, or, uh, just general city items that are being conducted. And there was an expression by the city council that a lot of these issues have been ongoing for some time, could have been brought up to the council, um, earlier, and, um, the, the, the tone of the correspondence was somewhat unprofessional. And so, um, there isn't really a specific subject, like number one was the special assessment interest. This just has to do with general city communication. And so it's, it's talked about in there that, um, these communications, um, may be scrutinized because all city council members' communications, uh, are typically public. There's a few exceptions to that. Uh, and so care must be taken not to undermine chain of command and hostile work environments and such, uh, because that all leads to potential legal liability on behalf of the city. So that was the concern with the general city communication part of it, and the goal here was to uh, reflect the tone of that conversation that we had in April and the substance of the email correspondences that were at issue. So that, that's sort of setting, setting the scene for this. The city council discussed, should the council member be asked to resign? Could there be a censuring process? Ultimately, the, the decision was made to publish the statement of disapproval and discuss uh, at this meeting, append this to the minutes of the meeting. So that's where we are today. Now, um, a few of the changes, uh, of the suggestions that I had today with Councilmember Buckley and this council can certainly comment on this and add any additional items that it would like to. There's a few, um, spots in paragraph number two where the word inappropriate is used. In the, in the third line, it, it states that the comments made in the email communications between the finance officer and the council member consisted of an inappropriate tone. And Councilmember Buckley requested that inappropriate be changed to unprofessional. And, um, I'm, I'm fine with that, that change personally. The city council can comment. Uh, inappropriate can sometimes have a larger definition to it that can cover all sorts of things that really aren't included in this, in what, in what the tone of the emails were. As I recall from my notes in our April meeting, Councilmember Buckley took responsibility for the uh, unprofessional tone of the emails. And so that is the reason for this potential revision here, to say that he acted unprofessionally, this finance officer acted unprofessionally. And, um, that makes it a little bit more specified than what inappropriate was. So that's in line three, and then I found another one um, at the bottom of paragraph two, these inappropriate actions create potential legal liability for the council, et cetera. And that the word inappropriate would be changed to unprofessional if the council agrees to that. Uh, another, the second suggestion was that there was a discussion that a lot of these issues that were discussed in, in our April meeting could have been brought to the full city council's attention. And that maybe there's been some lingering issues over time on this. The, the sentence there where it says, must be the first full sentence there in paragraph two, it's the clause saying, and the issues discussed should have been brought to the full council's attention. The suggestion from Councilmember Buckley, um, is that maybe a sentence could be added there stating that Councilmember Buckley had in the past discussed these various issues with the city administrator. That's a clarifying comment because in the email correspondence that we discussed, that the council discussed, there was a few, um, emails in there where Councilmember Buckley brought various concerns to the city administrator's attention, and they had meetings on it. And so, uh, that would give a little more color to this paragraph to make it clear that there was some, there was some discussion at the staff level. And then whether the city council ever wants to discuss various matters that were in those correspondences, it can do so later. But that, that's just a, a sentence that would be inserted in there that would be more of a clarifying um, item. So Councilmember Buckley, I don't know if you have anything to add on that. I did, I did discuss this, this afternoon with Adam as well, um, just to give him a heads up that we had a couple tweaks here to this paragraph. And of course, anything else the council may want to discuss or add or subtract, it can do so.
No, I think with the, the change in from inappropriate tone to unprofessional kind of pinpoints. You know, there's, it's more clarity to who's ever reading it. But I appreciate the change in those if the council agrees to that.
I agree with that.
I do, too. I think, yeah, unprofessional sounds better, I think.
Thank you.
I agree. I'm not sure about need, the need to add a sentence about bringing it to the city administrator. I don't know what that adds to the reasons for why we're writing the statement of disapproval. So I, I guess I don't see how that adds value to this personally, but I do like the change of, uh, unprofessional instead of inappropriate. Um, other thoughts on that? Does anyone?
What, Andy, what we're stating is these, uh, comments back and forth in emails, it's stating here, and Andy kind of agreed with it, stating anytime you have emails corresponding back and forth between council member or staff, it should be brought to the council's full attention, which going through the chain of command, I would go to your administrator first. And if that individual deems it necessary to bring it to council, which he suggested, I think it was January, then that's when I would bring it to the council. But that's just to clarify. I would think unless Andy has more input to that, but.
Well, ju- just so the council can understand this, um, fully, uh, it would be a clarification that, um, the, the first sentence reflects the council's discussion, if you recall. A few council members said that, you know, a, a, a lot of these issues should have been brought to the council's attention a long time ago. You know, we've been hearing think, things kicking around, um, uh, for some time now. And the clarification that's before you would be that just basically affirming that Councilmember Buckley has had discussions with the city administrator on some of these issues in the past. Um, and so, um, that's just, it just sort of adds some color to that statement that the full council, if you want, should have a discussion on, on these issues. And that's, of course, in your prerogative, but um, the step that Councilmember Buckley discussed with the city staff was, was done. Um, that just adds, you know, uh, additional context. It, to my mind, it doesn't change the overall statement of disapproval. And so it's a little bit different than the inappropriate change to unprofessional. That's more of a clarification as, as really what the tone of those emails were. This just adds a fact, um, further into the statement of disapproval. And, you know, obviously, I'm, I, I, I bring it up, I, because it was on our phone call today. And I would treat that as, as any other council member who may have some comments to this that we can, we can discuss that, and then maybe have a consensus on whether to add or delete. So that's at your discretion. But I just wanted to add, you know, this is the context here that there were discussions, and it was in the email, um, correspondence that we've, the council has looked at a few times now, um, that there have been discussions with Councilmember Buckley and Adam, uh, city administrator on these.
I guess I, it would be better if we knew what the sentence was actually gonna be worded like and how it appears and how it changes whatever perception might be made from reading this. So I guess it's, it's hard for me to approve that if I don't really know what it's gonna say.
I can write, uh, I, I scr- I made a sentence as well here, if, if you want, Councilmember Hanson.
That would be great.
And the mayor has.
Tell me where, where is the sentence going to appear?
Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, what did you say? I think I talked over you. Sorry.
No problem. There's, there definitely is significant delay, um, in City Hall. You know, I'm not sure that that language is necessary either, and I think that the context of this second paragraph is kind of getting a bit off course. It, I don't think that the council had a challenge. Now my internet is unstable again, so I hope that you can continue to hear me. I think that the, the second issue, the second, um, category here or topic was having these conversations with a staff member. Not directly with this, with the issue that's being, that was brought to, um, eventually to our attention, but having this, uh, council member employee communication back and forth that was not professional and not substantiated that we've seen. And so I, I don't think that there's any more clarification of whether or not this was brought forward to the city administrator or not. In this case, we're talking about specific behaviors that took place between Councilmember Buckley and, um, former employee Wanda Madsen, and those are the ones that are documented in these emails. So I would welcome that any issue of, of any kind be brought forward to the council regardless, but what we had in front of us was that the, not only the tone, but it of, you know, making allegations and, um, discussing other employees was not appropriate. It wasn't professional, and it brought the city at risk because of potential harassment. So I think us trying to wordsmith whether this was brought forward or not is irrelevant at this point. This is a significant topic that we're bringing forward and addressing. We, we didn't want to. Um, it's put us in a very awkward position as a council, and I wish that this had never happened, but it is documented, and I think it just needs to be reflected as such. So I don't think that there's a need for that language. I, but I do welcome any topics that are of concern to be brought forward to the iss- to the council via any constituent or business or council member or employee uh, to our attention at any time.
What do Connie and John Dahl think?
I tend to agree with the mayor's statement. Well said on your part, mayor, and, um, I couldn't have said it better myself, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
Yeah, and I guess I'm fine the way it is, except for I do feel that inappropriate should be replaced with because inappropriate to me kind of automatically assumes it was something could be something different. So I really feel that.
And I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we're all okay with not adding that sentence, so we don't have to hear what it was.
Yeah, uh, 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 thank you, Mayor Council. Um, I, I appreciate the discussion. And, uh, the, the sentence basically, just for, just to complete the loop here, is essentially saying that Councilmember Buckley had in the past discussed these. Councilmember Buckley had in the past discussed these issues with the city administrator. And that that's all it would be. And so I'm obviously neutral on that language. The council seems to to not include that, except for those two word changes from inappropriate to unprofessional. If those are the only clarifications, this document can stand as is and we can have it included in the minutes of the April 16th meeting in the files.
I actually would like to talk about the first paragraph. Because I thought that our discussion kind and maybe it was just me that interpreted that way, but I thought we leaned towards it being really it was Wanda's issue by doing that. And that if I were John Buckley in that situation, I don't know that I would have known to do anything differently. So I feel it's a little unfair to reprimand him for that because I don't know that he understood the extent to what was happening there. Or you know what I mean? Like it just I don't know that I would have understood it and I don't know that he did. I think he just thought that's the way things could work. So because I don't know, I just I I would like a little discussion around that because I thought that's what we talked about at our meeting was that that maybe was something forgivable on his part.
Well, yeah, you're right. It did kind of come up like that because it was said that other things were waived at times. So I remember that discussion. I don't exactly remember how it went. But I do remember going kind of down that avenue.
I mean, I know it's a fact and it did happen, but I didn't know if it was worth mentioning in this document or not, because it didn't feel like it was really it was really Officer Madsen's bad, if you want to say, you know. So I don't know how the rest of you feel. But I'd be fine taking that whole first part out and just having the second part because I feel like that's what was the issue was for me was the communication and the, you know, kind of undermining the chain of command and creating a hostile work environment. That's what bothered me about it. So.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. I I agree with you that the waiving of the fee, the interest, which was a very middle amount, but it's a principle of it. And Andy, on the 16th, I think, explained on assessments, the only ones that can change the any part of an assessment is the council and or the administrator, which I didn't know at the time and all I did was relay a message to Wanda on the fact that my in-laws did not receive any type of bill or anything that signified what amount they owed. And when they did get up to me, that's what happened. I agree with you that that shouldn't be part of the document because that's a whole separate separate issue as far as I'm concerned, and I didn't instigate that.
Right.
So I would agree with you, Michelle, that that should be taken off and just leave item two with everything else with it.
So when and I I fully support that you did not solicit this at all. But when we went to newly elected officials training and I attended it when I took office 10 years ago, they specifically called out being very careful of accepting any kind of gifts or transactions that are in your favor. So it alerted my radar when I heard of this. And when I read the correspondence that that would have been something that would have triggered, something that I would have probably gone to my city administrator or the legal and just said, you know, what are the what are the guidelines? Because we were all asked to go to newly elected officials training and I'm not sure. I know that Michelle did because she attended it with me all those years ago. But it, you know, is part of the handbook that we all received. So I, you know, I completely understand that John did not solicit this or ask for favors. But we also are supposed to be cognizant that we are not to accept any. So.
But I think I would have trusted that the finance officer would know what the rules are and that it would be okay or not okay, you know. So I feel like it's I I wouldn't want to have this on if I had done that. If I were in John's situation, I don't feel like it would be fair to have that as part of this because it didn't seem like he didn't ask for it. It makes it seem like he had a bigger role in this and he didn't actually benefit. It wasn't even his assessment. It was somebody else's. It was a family member. So I guess I I don't think I would have thought of that as him getting some kind of a gift. And I think he should have trusted that the city knew what they were doing. I would have.
Yeah, and I would have done the same for any neighbor that brought this up. This up. So but being I've worked there for almost 11 years and what I've seen in past practices of waiving late fees and everything, I didn't know. Like I say, you know, it's I should have known, but that past practice from working there, I didn't see anything out of the normal. Once I relayed the information, the question to Wanda, it was transferred to her. She had full authority from them and I was just, I let it go. So I I agree with Michelle that that paragraph should be taken out because this isn't the reason we're here. We're here because of some unprofessional email correspondings back and forth with staff.
Yeah. Yeah. This is tricky and I and I, you know, shooting from the hip here, I certainly see both both sides. I I'm going to, you know, tend to agree with the mayor on this one a little bit more and side with the sort of I I don't mean to pick on John, but we're sort of held to a higher standard and and I don't, this sounds bad, but ignorance of the situation doesn't really excuse it for me. And again, I agree, it wasn't solicited in any way, shape or form. I guess I just would have loved to have seen a statement, maybe, hey, I'm not asking for this, you know, any sort of special treatment. And I know you didn't. But so I guess that's that's where I am. On this, I'm gonna I'm gonna tend to side with the mayor's point on this a little bit more. But, you know, it it's tricky.
I guess, oh, sorry, John.
Go ahead.
I guess I I'm tending to agree more with Michelle on it. Well, I guess only because John had worked there and if he if this is something that had been that he had seen. So I don't know if you'd say it was ignorance or just that it was a a practice that he had seen done on other things, you know, waving, not that they did favors, but that they waived fees. See, I'm not down there doing the bills or know if it gets waived or for certain things or not. But if at the time he was employed there and that and that was something that happened, I wouldn't consider that he was acting ignorant. But I also think that Wanda should be the one that would have said, hey, John, you know what, hears them out. You know, that's her job, I guess. That's how I'm looking at it.
No, I get that. And I'm certainly not calling John ignorant. I'm just saying ignorance ignorance of the law is not an excuse.
You know, sometimes the word ignorance bliss.
You don't. You don't get to say, you know, I was caught speeding in a 45 saying, well, I didn't know it was 45. So ignorance of the law is not an excuse for me.
Yeah, but I guess that's not.
Ignorance of the rules.
Same, but.
Um, no, it sort of is for me. I guess I ask, you know, for I want, and if it's been going on, that that doesn't and I get it.
I don't think it was this particular wave. I guess I didn't understand that it was the same fees, but just that fees had been waived.
Right. So the greater point for me is we we have, we have evidence that it was in this case and if it's been going on prior and whether it was appropriate in some instances or not appropriate in other instances is you know, that doesn't, if it's been going on and hasn't been appropriate like it was in this situation, it needs to it needs to not happen. And saying they did it too was not.
No, I'm not saying that. But I'm just wondering, are there fees, Adam, are there fees that do get waived sometimes? Oh, I mean, in the one, I know you weren't there. You haven't been there that.
Not when it comes to assessments as far as the practice of the city. There are cases for some utility late fees that I'm aware of having been waived. Or the finance officer position, the finance officer has had because they're the ones who do the collection for the fees, we do work out payment plans and that type of thing. We don't. We don't have a lot of fees that include late fees. So really dog licenses and utility bills are on top of assessments, typically the only fees that I off the top of my head can think of that we include late fees. So it is a rare opportunity.
I have a question.
That is definitely a topic that we should as a as a council bring up and and formalize a position on that going forward.
Yeah, I agree, Susan.
Yeah. If I if if I can add just something quick on that paragraph, the first paragraph, the statement of disapproval is sort of for the impermissible forgiveness of special assessment interest line item is sort of the statement of disapproval for that entire transaction. And it was drafted, if you look at it, Councilmember Buckley was only mentioned in there in the third line there, talking about the family members of of him, of the council member. And then it sort of goes through how that process worked and what was impermissible about it. We're certainly not disparaging the finance officer here. That we've already, that transaction has already occurred. She has moved on with the resignation. So the point of that was not to disparage that position. It was not to disparage Councilmember Buckley. It was the statement of disapproval over that entire process. And that would cover as the as the mayor, Councilmember Dahl, put it, sort of the the new council member training aspect to it. You know, I didn't go into those details, but that just sort of the the council member responsibilities. In that, the rest of the council is stating their disapproval of that entire transaction, which, as it's noted here, Councilmember Buckley was not involved in, you know, it doesn't talk about soliciting or any of that stuff. But it's just overall, this is a problematic transaction for the city. The city has no authority to even do this. The city does have some authority to waive late fees on other other fees, dog licenses, water fees and such, but not on special assessments. And so the fact that that happened, very nominal dollar amount, that still sort of required an analysis from our office saying what reporting responsibilities does the city have? What potential liability would the city have for this? If it was a much bigger assessment, then there'd be, you know, even a larger liability on that. So I I was hoping that that paragraph would make it clear that the Councilmember Buckley portion of it was small, but it's a disapproval over just how that entire item happened. Paragraph two gets more into the unprofessional aspects of it. So I don't know if that helps at all with the discussion.
Thank you.
It doesn't change my mind, but that's my my question is how does this work? Do we vote and does John Buckley vote or just the four of us? Or how do we decide to go forward?
Well, if if the only changes were those two word changes, in my in my view, there's no vote needed because
No, I'm saying I would like to vote.
If you want to change that paragraph, yes, if you want to change, if you want to delete that paragraph, I think it would be appropriate for the council to vote on that. And Councilmember Buckley was able to vote on the initial votes back in April 16. There's no conflict, so to speak, on a financial basis. That's where the conflicts of interest come up. Councilmembers can recuse themselves for various reasons. And other times they can't. In this case, we're not talking about anything that financially comes back to John Buckley. It's it's more on just sort of how this is approved in the minutes. So I don't have a problem with all council members voting. So if you really wanted, if you want to change by deleting paragraph one, I think a vote would be appropriate.
Okay, well, for me, the statement of disapproval is about paragraph two only and not about paragraph one. So I would like it to be removed in order for me to approve this statement of disapproval.
Thank you, Michelle. There's a motion on the table.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a second from John Buckley.
All right, roll call.
Any further discussion? I have very strong, I have strong feelings about someone voting and making a motion to dismiss behavior that's been brought to the council's attention and has invested so much of our time to to make a motion to dismiss it on their own behalf, but I will put it to the vote of the councils. So Adam, we please call roll.
Can we hold on just a moment? I was muted for a second and I agree with the mayor on that point. And I want to make sure I understand we're voting on the first paragraph being removed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Item number one.
Correct. Okay, thank you for clarification.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hanson?
Hi.
Councilmember Buckley?
Hi.
Councilmember Carlson?
I'm gonna have to go nay after listening to Andy's explanation.
Councilmember Dahl?
Nay.
Councilor, Mayor St. Andrews?
Nay.
Motion fails. Two, three.
Uh, Mayor and Council, so for clarification, then the statement of disapproval will stand with the the two words saying inappropriate changing to unprofessional. If that, and so that will be attached to the minutes unless there are any other proposals or motions. That's how I interpret the vote.
Sounds right. Any other changes? I think I think everyone agreed that unprofessional was a much more accurate statement.
Yes, I I definitely, that was my thought.
So anyone have any anything other than that? Andy, I think if you make that change, it can stand. All right. Again, not something that any of us wanted to discuss and very sorry to bring this to anyone's attention. It's an unfortunate situation. We'll move on now to new business. We have several items to cover this evening. Item number one is to consider the authorization to solicit quotes for sanitary sewer cleaning and televising. So Matt, you are up.
Adam, Mayor, members of council. As the mayor indicated, this is to just to solicit quotes for sanitary sewer cleaning and televising. The last time this was done was 2017. And normally we run on a three year cycle to do this. As I indicated in the memo, any any recurring ones that have been issues in the past, we try our best to do them in-house. We are not we just don't have the staff to do this full time in-house essentially. So staff is proposing to clean approximately 46,000 feet and televise approximately 32,000 feet of sewer pipe this year. This cleaning is considered essential. Every, the last time it was done in 2017, there was significant amounts of roots that were cleaned. And the viewing showed a couple of areas of concern and we have affixed a fair amount of those, also with the street project this year or with street project in 2017. And then the street MINDAP project, we've been able to televise and then fixed a couple of these locations. The reason for not televising the same amount as what we're cleaning is that some of that area has already been lined and some of it is plastic. And so staff did not feel that that was a priority. There also is an alternative attached to the quote solicitation or the estimated cost. That alternative is for areas Uh, that alternative is for areas that um essentially have plastic lines that have been installed fairly recently. Um, but still should get cleaned, but it would not be the end of the world if they didn't. Uh, those areas are um probably about half of Inspiration, um, the older portion, um, also uh Lake Street, and then um the line to the new fire hall. So I don't believe that any of those areas have been cleaned in the past. Um, and so that's why they were listed as an alternative. Um, if the, if the price that we receive or the quote that we receive is a, is a decent price, then I would highly consider cleaning in those locations too. Quotes uh will be solicited in June, hopefully, that we can get the request for quote out. Um, we'll just be using the local contractors, not the local contractors, but the contractors that we've sent it to in the past. Um, and then the preference would be that we could get it back to the July city council meeting for acceptance. And then the completion work says October thirty-first on the memo, but I looked back here yesterday and we were actually still um cleaning and televising all the way to, I believe, November fifteenth in twenty seventeen. And so it doesn't, it can easily go all the way to that point as long as stuff isn't freezing. So um, staff does understand that there's definitely financial impacts to the city, especially, you know, given the current situation. Um, but foregoing this type of work, um, you know, probably it, it's just critical to get it done at this point in time. Uh, so at this point, staff recommends city council adopt a motion authorizing solicitation of quotes for um the prescribed sanitary sewer cleaning and televising. Um, specifications will be uh prepared by, both by the city engineer and myself to try and keep further costs down. Stand for questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Oh.
I can hear Connie say no. Any other council member?
Nope. Seems reasonable to me.
Okay. All right. Well then, um comprehensive and uh, does anyone make a motion? Can you hear me?
Michelle, they're all mute. I'll make a motion to authorize uh solicitation of quotes for the sanitary sewer cleaning and televising specs, specs by the city engineer.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll second that motion. Sorry.
I know, me too, sorry.
No problem. So
I don't know how to mute.
I had to mute, I had to send a note and I'm like, I'm running out of battery. So I have to switch to my phone and see if that'll work. So let's finish this vote and I'll try switching over.
Okay. Um, for, we have a first and a second. Adam?
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley?
Aye.
Mayor St. Norris?
Aye.
Aye, all.
So Michelle, just let us know if and when we need to, if we need to pause so that you can get reconnected.
I assume that I'll just come in as a second person and Adam just has to allow me in. So I think it'll go smoothly, but I just wanted to make sure you guys knew in case something didn't go smoothly.
Very good. Our second item under new business is to consider a temporary reclassification of the office support specialist position to assume city accounting and utility billing functions. And so with this, I'll turn the mic over to Adam.
All right. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, as we were previously discussing and as you're all aware, um, back in March, uh, Finance Officer Madsen retired from the city and her duties have uh, at that time were split. Um, we started process or contracting out some of the payroll functions. And then the rest of the administrative staff has been uh sharing those, uh, those tasks. Um, when the pandemic hit, uh, that obviously complicated uh everybody's plans and everything, but uh specifically are replacing uh the finance officer position. Uh, during that time, staff has been discussing um how best to move forward with the long-term uh, the long-term uh completion of those tasks. Um, and one of the things during the pandemic, we have had the uh administrative staff, as I said, split those, but both the uh accounts payable and accounts receivable functions, uh basically all the bills uh both that we receive and uh checks to pay out, um, have been done by the office administrative staff, um, the office support specialists, uh Marion Chantel. And um then that also has been included, the utility billing. Uh, those are the two significant, uh, very time-consuming uh duties um that are, are no longer being done by uh finance officer. Um, some of the other uh smaller finance roles uh will as well be passed on or redelegated and split up amongst the administrative staff um and the two office support specialists. Um, for, very fortunately, we've had uh both of our sta-, our current staff members uh are more than capable of uh stepping up and they've been interested in uh taking on additional responsibility. And so we've been very fortunate that they've been able to handle a, a lot of those duties. Um, in order to recognize their increased workload, um, because we've, we went from, we're down one person in the administrative department. It, we, we, the staff, administrative staff, myself and a assistant administrator Taylor are proposing to uh upgrade their uh, their positions on the pay scale and create a new job class, um, which would be office support specialist two. And then uh it's slash finance clerk, because they're not doing the entire finance officer position. Um, there will be, as I said, we currently uh contract out some of the payroll functions, which costs us about seventy-five hundred dollars annually. Um, and then uh we also have the investments uh that are currently handled by by UBS, uh is one of our consultants for that. And we're looking to uh move that um to uh another firm uh to have a little more um hands-on help. And uh, but that is a very minimal uh cost. The, so our, our proposal is to move them up from our grade two, step two, to grade five, uh step five. There's currently no positions at grade five. Um, I included, just for the, I'll show it in case the council wants to look at it now. Just one moment to share my screen. Okay, if everybody can now see that, um the, the, both the specialists are currently at this step two uh on the grade two. We're proposing to move them up to grade five, uh step two. Uh, the finance officer position is grade eight. And as you can see, uh Ms. Madsen was uh at, maxed out at the, on the steps. Um, and so I did put the, uh, this does include, the, the scenarios below, does include the kind of all-in um, about ninety-five, ninety-nine percent, somewhere in there, all-in um for the finance functions um between uh Marion Chantel, uh with and without the increase. And as you can see, the previous, back in March, beginning of March, the level we were at was approximately that two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. Um, and that does include benefits. And then either with, with the increase or without the increase, it's, as you can see, a very significant uh reduction. Um, it's with the, with the, with the increase, it's uh just barely over fifty percent. So with that, and we tried to split that between the grade two and grade eight, um, because most of the tasks are being done um by, by that new position, by that staff. Um, we are, as a, what I was gonna say is we aren't uh we'd still need possibly an, at, at some point, once we figure out, um once things, I want to say settle down, uh, we get a little bit closer back to normal. Um, there still probably will be uh some additional administrative uh office support tasks that need some assistance with. And so uh between Sarah and myself and both Marion Chantel, um, we, we may need to, you know, have another part-time um unbenefited person or a temp. Um, but that's, it's kind of too early. Uh, we're still trying to just get through the next uh couple of months. Um, so that's a, that's a later discussion. Uh, as you can see with Chantel, she currently works only twenty hours a week. Um, and so that uh Mary's full-time at forty hours. Um, so that's the reason that her pay, her wages are approximately half and she's currently unbenefited. Um, so that's uh an additional, uh, you know, we're very fortunate to have that uh, that very good help um with that relatively low cost. So with that, um, we, we, we would have to come back with a formal job description. Um, but we are proposing to have the pay increase, um, because they have been doing this since March. And I'd like to compen-, start compensating them for their uh relatively large increased workload immediately. Um, so with that, I'm happy to take any questions and I'll uh
Adam, based on your last statement, um, are you proposing back pay?
No.
For March or just moving forward?
Um, if the council approves it tonight, um, it would be on the next pay period.
Okay. Thank you. I had the opportunity to talk to Adam today about this. I had some questions about it and um you know, I, I really don't have anything to add other than I support this proposal. To me, it makes sense um for lot, a lot of reasons. Number one, you know, the, the financial impact for the city and uh we, we found good help and um we've been able to um add to their workload and, and uh you know, use their versatility to the city's advantage. And so uh this proposal makes a lot of sense for me.
And Adam, they're both um on board and um up for taking on?
They, yes, council member, uh, we, we discussed, well, Sarah and I have discussed this with them. Um, it, it's something that uh kind of naturally came about where they had voiced interest, um, as well as we had already been talking about it. Um, they, we were, we were very impressed by their capabilities, um, you know, when we hired them. Uh, we knew that there was, they were capable of doing additional, uh, taking on additional responsibilities perhaps in the future. Uh, we, we, we obviously knew that at some point, you know, staff would be retiring um at various points. So um, we're always trying to look for someone who can help out uh with cross-training and such. Uh, so, but both of them, uh, throughout the last couple of months, we've been discussing with them and making sure that they are uh one competent and capable of taking this on, but as well as interested. Um, we're not trying to set them up to fail. We want uh all their staff to uh be successful.
Oh, yeah. No, I just wanted to make sure they were totally interested in it. I think it's a great idea. And um, but I just wanted to see their feelings on it.
Michelle, are you, are you speaking?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea too. Um, I just still have a little confusion about it's, it says uh a temporary reclassification, so I guess I'm not clear on what the plan is.
I was gonna ask that too. I'm sorry. I saw that.
I'm like, are we talking about like till the end of the year and then we're gonna reevaluate or, and then what happens to their pay grade at that point if they go back to not having the finance clerk position? I don't know, I just kind of would like more clarification on if you think this is the way it's gonna be going forward and we can actually handle Wanda's job with them doing things they've been doing and having the outside firm do the rest. And you guys, maybe, I don't know if you and Sarah are doing some of it too, but I guess, I guess I'd just like more clarification on the word temporary.
Sure. Thank you, council member. Um, yeah, the temporary is because we um we, we don't know that it'll be permanent in this scenario. Um, we may, we're, we're coming into budget uh season here. And as I kind of indicated, um, right now we are, we went from essentially two and a half people doing these tasks to, um, sorry, four and a half people doing these tasks to uh three and a half. And so we are down one person um in the administration department. Um, we, the, being, the, the temporary aspect is if we, we get closer to the budget and this is working, um, then we would make that permanent as part of the twenty-twenty-one budget. So it would essentially throughout the rest of this budget year is the interim temporary period um to make sure that this is more of like a probation, uh probationary period, that it's, it's workable and working.
Okay.
Um, that kind, as I, as I indicated earlier, alluded to, um because we, we had the one and a half uh administrative staff, DAF support staff, um, prior to this, essentially the sixty hours a week. Um, and now we added about eighty-five percent of a another full-time person workload on those, that one and a half uh FTE. Um, we may need to get, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty hours of unbenefited, part-time help. Uh, but we, we don't know yet. It's, everything is still so fluid as far as trying to figure out where we'll be in six months. Um, so that, I don't wanna, I don't want there to be any surprises. Um, we're not looking to add another full-time person um for next year, but the temporary is basically, it's more of interim un- until, until it changes.
Okay.
The council tells us.
Wait, you don't really see us adding a full-time finance officer?
Not at this point. I think um with the, because we have uh the, like I said, because we Marion Chantel, I'll just be candid, Marion Chantel are very interested in taking on a lot of this additional workload. And if we reorganize some of the assignment and delegation of duties, um, I think that it, because we're contracting out some of the payroll functions, um, as well as uh, we, we continue to contract out some of the uh investment management um and possibly uh do that a little bit more, that it'll, it'll free up a little bit of our uh bandwidth, if you will, um, to allow us to kind of reorganize the whole administrative department. Um, and so I think the finance clerk position is more of what we, uh, I don't want to say get away with, but what we can manage, make work without an actual finance officer. If, if we were, the alternative would be, I'd actually advocate for a finance director position. Which I'm not doing that at this time. I'm not going in that direction. Um, but if we were gonna have a full-time, just focused on finance, I'd want them to actually do more.
Okay. I do feel like this, like, we're missing the piece of information, excuse me, about how much we're paying the outside firm or firms to do the other part of the job. So this comparison of scenario March one to scenario June one with and without.
He gave us a price, I thought he said.
For the payroll services, it, as I said, it's about seventy-five hundred.
Um, oh, okay.
A year. Uh, that part has already been w- we know that much. Uh, the, basically the only other, um the uh, forgive me, the investment management uh services, um, we're looking at, I don't want to publicly announce anything right now, but we are looking at uh a different firm. We currently use one firm. Um, so we are looking at uh possibly transferring that uh to someone locally um and uh discussing that with them. They, they do other uh work for the city, uh financial work.
Okay, so ballpark for that part is?
That, it, it's, it's not a flat rate. Um, it's based on uh kind of the portfolio uh that's managed. So that is uh, it, it's, it's very minimal though. It's not a, it's not a very high figure.
Okay.
I, I, I don't have those numbers right now, um, but I, I do know that it's relatively minimal.
All right, sounds like a, a good idea overall to me. Thanks for clarifying.
Sorry.
Um, Buckley, do you have any questions? No?
Nope. Sounds like a good deal.
Very good. Um, I, I agree. I think leveraging our, our resources and offering them opportunities to grow is uh especially if they have an interest and passion in doing so, I like the idea of not I like the idea of not bringing on yet another full time employee with benefits. Especially until we see how this model really shakes out. And even with the increases and the additional outsourcing fees, we're still well below. Well below almost 100 K of what we were. No, I'm sorry.
Uh huh, you're right.
Yeah, it is a significant savings that allows us a little bit of flexibility. It also may help us in that segregation of duties. Line item that we continually hear from the auditors of having just one person responsible and having that visibility. So I think having some of this spread out and having other checks and balances and having the third party do the payroll part. Seems to accomplish all of that, but it'd be great to test it out for the next six months. And of course, we'd have to budget ahead of that time, but we'll have a good idea of how things are working and go from there. So I think it's, I compliment you for being creative and all of the staff are stepping up during this timeframe. And I think it's a good proposal. Any other questions or comments from the, the staff or council?
No.
Okay, then would someone like to make a motion?
Okay.
I lost my spot here, sorry.
I'll make a motion to temporarily reclassify the office support specialist positions. And authorize a salary adjustment as presented and discussed tonight.
Thank you, Connie. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, John Buckley. Adam, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor St. Ors.
Aye.
Eyes all. Thank you. I just want to say again, thank you to Mary and Chantel. They've really stepped up and we, we really couldn't have done this, you know, gotten through this without a lot of their effort, so. Thank you.
Well, I think you've put in some effort. You, I, we also know that you and Sarah, but you in particular have put in many hours. With the payroll and the transition of that, so thank you to the extended staff as well. Okay, so item three under new business is to consider a resolution for temporary waiver of city permit and zoning requirements. To promote business activity during COVID-19 health pandemic. Again, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is fairly straightforward. I'm not going to get into it too much. But as everybody knows, we are under, you know, ever shifting pandemic. And back, that started kind of the stay home order back on March 13th. Since that time, it's taken a, you know, a huge blow on most of our local businesses as well as businesses across the nation, state. The region, county. Because effective today, the most recent executive order regarding the. Stay home, stay safe order from the governor. Did allow it, started to expand the outdoor seating that dining establishments can have for up to 50 people. Lot of the other cities in surrounding area and throughout the state are trying to quickly accommodate. Their local businesses and dining establishments to be able to open back up in some form or fashion. We are very fortunate in Bayport that almost all of our outdoor dining establishments already had as part of their commercial use permits. They were already authorized to have outdoor seating. So it, there wasn't, most of them were able to start doing that today if they so choose. But just to make sure we have all our bases covered and to give them as much opportunity as we can. Along with, very similar to many other cities across the state, we created a program. To allow expansion of their pre-authorized outdoor seating. And this, just for, just for the record, this does include expansion for other non-dining. Establishments, but I don't know that we'll have any. But I just, I did leave that in there from the examples that I was provided. In case somebody, you know, in case somebody was hard pressed to have people in their business. So I just wanted to make sure the public knew about that. But what this does is, in order to streamline the process and because we only meet once a month. I'm requesting that the council authorize these permits or any expansion without. Without alterations of their liquor licenses to be done, to be able to be done administratively. That way we can expedite it and not have to. Basically have the city council meet or wait to, for the next month's meeting. This, from the interest that I've had or that I've received from some of the business community, they're excited to have this. I know one of our businesses already is utilizing this type of program. So there is a resolution that I'm requesting the council or recommending that the council consider passing. To permit this. And there's not a specific sunset on this. When the city council decides to terminate this program. They would have 14 days to be notified that they needed to cease this expanded operation and go back to the pre-existing. I have worked with Chief Eastman. She was very helpful in getting some of this together and working with the business, contacting the business communities. The business community. To get them up to speed and get input from them. They, we've been working with them as far as security, just so they know and so the public knows. If there's, you know, any issues with the operation of the expansion. I, the administrator or the, my designee is authorized to terminate their expanded permit. For safety or if it gets out of hand, if there's something that's causing problems, such as alcohol leaving the premise unauthorized. I don't foresee that happening, but that is in here. And they've all been very, the ones that who have contacted the city are very, you know. Grateful, gracious that we're, the city is, you know, making these efforts. So we're happy to do what we can. With that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions from the council?
I don't have any.
No.
Makes a lot of sense for me. I'm glad we're able to be flexible and help our business owners and neighbors out.
Especially with all those orange cones out there, that's not helping them either.
Abs, absolutely.
Sure.
Very good. Yeah, it was, it was one of the first things that I felt like we could actually do to help, so. I'm delighted.
Should I make a motion?
All right, well, I think that you have a very positive response here, Adam. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, move that we adopt a resolution for temporary waiver of city permit and zoning requirements to promote business activity. During COVID-19 health pandemic.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, John. Adam.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley.
Aye.
Mayor St. Ors.
Aye.
Eyes all. Thank you.
Excellent. Great, and thank you for working hard and fast and for the collaboration from the county as well. So Gary, Creesel and team, we really appreciate that because several of our businesses are on Fifth Avenue, which is a county road. So it's nice to see the collaboration across, across the line. So thank you for your hard work and fast work to make that happen. Our next item of new business is to consider the renewal of the contract with Minspec for building inspection services. So, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for everybody's recollection, back in 2016, we started using Minspec for all building official inspection services. And 2017, we did extend that with a three year renewal for their inspection and building official services. We're now in 2020 and obviously things are a little different than normal. But staff has been very, very satisfied with working with Minspec. The feedback that we've got from the contractors and some of the applicants, we did an informal survey. Recently of, which I have not had these shared with Scott Qualley, who is, has joined us. But the, I did include them in the packet and they, you know, the. You can see the questions, there's the statements there. The feedback was positive. They're very. They're very familiar with the code and they're very stringent on enforcement. The, the time was the time for permit, plan review and interaction has been good. One of the things that I will note that I did. We, with the outdoor seating, if the council saw, Minspec did create a. Load calculator for capacity, which I thought was very helpful. Since the last time that we renewed the contract, one of the biggest changes is the permitting software. The council that recalls that discussion, we were in between our previous permit soft, building permit software. And the city force is what we were kind of waiting on from Minspec, who had, was having that created. We've since started using that. I believe that was in 2019, Scott, if at the beginning of 2019, I recall correctly. And that seems to be going very well. The staff likes using it. Obviously, with any software, it takes a while to get used to it. But we, during the COVID pandemic. Things, as you know, building inspections are, have been considered essential, so that really hasn't stopped. Construction hasn't necessarily slowed down at all from our end. I think Scott may have obviously more detailed information. But with that, they have requested a three year renewal, and so I've been discussing that with Mr. Qualley. And staff's position is that we do continue this relationship at this time. Just for the public's information, of all the permit fees. What the fee arrangement is, is Minspec gets 75% of the permit fees. The city retains the other 25%. And then 75% of the plan review fees. And the plan review fees are set at 65% of the permit fee, so it's a lesser amount. For the software, the use of the software, we do, that the only other charge is the 75%, or sorry, $75 per month. Which is fairly low and we really have no complaints, so. I'm happy to share the, the survey, the more detailed survey information with anybody who would like that. It's, the format isn't really packet friendly. So it's just kind of, it's. So please let me know if you'd like any of that at a later date. But with that, I will stand for questions or I know, like I said, Mr. Qualley is here to answer any as well.
Adam.
Yes.
Is this, is the 75%, you know, sort of commensurate with cities of our size in Minnesota?
Mr. Qualley could probably, Scott, you could probably answer that better. My understanding is that that's fairly, the kind of the going rate.
Scott, you'd need to unmute.
I can't hear Scott.
I can't either.
Can't hear you.
Are you able to chat? Be able to answer the question in the chat? If he's on his phone, it might be difficult. How about now?
Yep. There we go.
Apparently I had the wrong microphone selected, which isn't nearly as bad as not being able to mute, but it's pretty, pretty close. Sorry about that. The, I can't speak for what other companies do, but generally, I mean, I know what we do. Generally, we're in that target range. We have a five year contract with North St. Paul that is a similar. Percentage as well. Our fees in Isantia are a little bit higher, but we're driving a little bit further for that. So it's, it's in the ballpark and it isn't being proposed to be changed. It's the same number that we've had since the beginning of the contract four years ago.
Is that something that, you know, if we were able to lock in on a longer contract, something that could be. Negotiated or I'm just throwing this, shooting from the hip on this stuff, I guess.
I'm, I would be willing to discuss that with Adam and whoever wants to be involved in that process, sure.
Food for that. I'm just throwing it out there.
I think a three year contract is, is fine for now, personally. I'm a little concerned. I know Adam said that the ratings were all great, but. Three isn't, isn't positive on a five point scale. So, so a couple of items I would like Scott to address how he's gonna do better. Where permit inquiries were answered in a timely fashion, the survey came back with a three on that, which was labeled as neutral. And staff provided complete, accurate information, again, neutral. From my experiences doing survey research for 30 years, I would say those aren't. Great ratings and you'd probably like to see them better and I hope that Adam shares the results. Maybe he has more detail on what some of that might mean, I'm not sure. But I'd like to see those better in the future, I guess.
I, I'm inclined to agree. It is the first time I saw him, you know, a half hour ago or whenever it was, I guess an hour ago now that I joined the, the meeting. The, I, I think that. One of the important components of this is that we're an enforcement agency. And so people might ask us, well, how am I supposed to build this deck? And the response is, I can't design it for you. You're going to need to, you know, work with a contractor or work with a design professional or something else. We can tell someone that their two by 10 header is too small and needs to be a two by 12, but. We can't take something on the back of a napkin and turn it into a plan and then produce it, provide it back to us to review and then approve. So sometimes those kinds of responses get lost in the fact that we don't have the ability to do. Some of the things that people might like us to do. So, but I, I would agree with you that doing better than a three in those two areas is something that we would aspire to do.
Do you have any way to like get, respond more quickly or anything? Do you have any? I know you haven't had any time to think it through, but it'd be nice if you had a plan or like something, or you speak with your staff about how you're going to be able to. Be more timely, if that's an issue for sure, and then. We need to work on our statements because I don't know if you're not being complete or not being accurate in the information you're providing. It's kind of got two things in one there, but.
I would definitely like to talk to you at length about how to better develop surveys because it sounds like you know quite a bit about that. As far as the timely goes, and Adam, maybe you can help me with the timeframe of the, the informal survey. If it was during the last 60 days or 90 days. I suspect that part of that is that we were reorienting our office and moving people to their homes and. Trying to implement a new phone system and using Microsoft Teams and some other things. So some of those delays might have been a function of the fact that we were trying to work without people in our office when. Normally I could just holler down the hall and get someone to take care of something for me.
Yeah, that's a good point. Hopefully that's it, yeah.
Yeah, if I, if I can just add one thing, Councilmember Hanson. The, and again, Scott, I'm sorry, I haven't had the chance to even share these with you, so again. Everybody knows that Minspec has not seen these surveys and they were very, I don't want to say they're informal, but they weren't scientific by any means. They were, they were, they were done in the last 30 days. So they were very, you know, when the contract deadline came up. That's when we, that would be good to go out and, we only got about a dozen responses. Which also is more difficult because I think other people, everybody has kind of other things on their mind right now than filling out a. Survey that the city sent after the fact. So we are looking, I, I wanted to be able to talk to Scott about these in person and be able to talk about how we can, you know, address some of these, and I'm sure there's additional information. I haven't spoke to any of the specific applicants. We, we, we had a good variety of permit applicants, some of the, with all the major builders, the larger builders in the city, as well as smaller individual contractors. And a couple individual applicants, non, non-contractors who pulled their own permits. So the, the, the survey was positive. It was, obviously it wasn't, you know, five stars across the board. But I, I don't want to hold all that against Minspect. I, I don't think it, that would be fair. It, it was my survey that I got from, I found from other, other similar examples, so.
I'd be happy to help you write any survey you ever want to do, Adam or Scott. And I think that we just should note that overall, the question, my overall experience was positive, did get a four on average, so that's good. It's just, so I think in general, they are doing a good job. I just wanted him to, you know, I just wanted to point out that there's a couple of areas that could improve. And it could possibly just be like he said, it's been the last 30 days, so it's probably could be related to some internal issues going on, but.
There's always room for improvement.
Yeah. Glad you agree.
Any other question? Thank you, Michelle. It's, it's nice to have a resident expert in those things, so. I'm sure it would be taken up on your kind offer. Any other questions from the council?
No, I have none.
I don't either. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve a three-year renewal contract with Minspect Incorporated to provide building official and inspection services to the city of Bayport as presented.
Thank you, John Dahl. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle and Adam.
Councilmember Dahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley?
Aye.
Mayor St. Ors?
Aye.
Aye, as all.
Very good. Good to work with you another three years. Thank you.
Thank you all. And again, remember that I, you know, we, I never feel like I've arrived. There's always opportunities for us to improve and any feedback that you have for me, whether it's through a survey or comments you've received from constituents, again, happy to speak about them, address them, work with you to make sure that those things get resolved. So thank you very much for your faith and confidence.
Very good.
Welcome.
Adam, I did send you, I'm sorry, a corrected document. There was one typo and I changed the date from May to June, so you should be in the email now, so. We'll, I'll, I'll see you in the next few days and we'll get it taken care of. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. So this will take us to our city council liaison reports. And, and I have to say, I love the cat that's joined our meeting for most of the evening. Absolutely lovely. Yeah. It's been another month of being in quarantine with COVID, so does any council member have anything to report?
Well, we had a virtual library board meeting on the 21st of May. It was a pretty short meeting, went over the typical bills and stuff, but the the facility master plan, there was a group from BTR, and don't ask me what BTR stands for, because I can't remember. Anyway, they had showed us a PowerPoint presentation. And it was actually not really telling us what to do, but giving the library ideals that might work in their space. Also, some ideals of some repairs that need to be made, some structure that could use the spaces at a, you know, better way. So that took care of most of our meeting. And it was very interesting. Like I said, they weren't there to tell the library board what to do. They were just, they looked at the space and then gave them some ideals to think about and consider when they redo or vamp up or whatever you want to call it. And then the only other thing is that Jill will be planning some virtual programming this summer. I think with a book club and some other programs that she's done, they're gonna do them virtual instead. Not sure which ones they are yet, but that was the plan. And then they were also able to resume their delivery to the, to the Croydale, the books. So that, that's kind of the main things. And they are going to have another meeting on the 16th at 6 o'clock. That's it.
Very good. Great. Thank you, Connie. John Buckley, was there, I don't think there was anything with the planning commission, but.
No, no report from the planning commission and the Anderson Advisory Committee has postponed it due to COVID-19 until prob, tentative date in September.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Michelle, cable?
Nothing.
Okay, great. And John Dahl?
Yeah, Middle St. Cray Watershed Management Organization met virtually. I have not received the minutes from, that's usually how I report on things, but there was nothing specific to Bayport. We're still in, you know, the broader group and one watershed, one plan talks and just reviewing some projects, a couple down in Lakeland and Lakeland Shores. So nothing specifically related to Bayport. If anybody's interested in more, I can certainly get information headed their way.
Thank you very much. I did not have any extra meetings. There is a meeting that I'm attending with Adam tomorrow morning between the various cities of Stillwater, Oak Park Heights in Bayport and the Chamber Director, Robin Anthony. We do that periodically just to exchange ideas and current information. I'm sure that we'll be discussing a lot about the businesses being, opening up a little bit and the outdoor dining tomorrow morning, so look forward to that. And the only other thing that I want to say is that over the course of the last couple of months, I am ever grateful and increasingly so for the professionalism and the dedication and the hours and the flexibility that we have seen with our police department, our fire department, our administrative staff and Public Works, and I just want to thank you all. We're very lucky to have this level and quality and dedication. And I'm sure that I, I see Michelle putting up positive. And I wanted to convey that to not only the heads of the departments, but to everyone on your teams. So thank you. It's been stressful times and it's been nice to know that we can count on you.
You nailed it, Mayor. Thank you for mentioning that, and I completely agree with what you said and glad you are, pointed all that out. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, John. All right. Well, with that, Adam, we can turn it over to the department heads.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I, I do appreciate the support that the council's had for staff. It, as everybody knows firsthand, it's been incredibly difficult in all facets of our lives for the last, as long as we can remember, seems, but it's, it's been, you know, not every city has been a been able to weather it as well as us, and I'm, I'm very, I'm very thankful that we have a great staff on board and this part of the council makes it, makes it work, so thank you. With that, you have Library Director Smith's report, but I will call on Chief Isinger to provide the fire department update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Hopefully you can still hear me.
Yes.
Oh, great. For the month of May, we had 68 fire calls compared to 119 for May of 2019. Year-to-date call volume for 2020 is 376 compared to 515 for 2019. All fire departments are continuing to see a decrease in calls with the stay home and stay safe. Some are reporting 25 to 50% reduction in calls. Our monthly e-drills were the EMT First Responder Quarterly Review, and we did our first in-person spoke training with six members and we took our vote out, so everybody's trained in that. Fire inspections are ongoing as well as new pant, plan reviews, and we've been helping businesses get prepared to open up today and, and helping them with the understanding they needed to do for the social distancing and the occupancy for their businesses. Just helping them best we can. Due to the pandemic, we've had to do a lot of changes in our response. And people may wonder why the fire department, we show up, but yet we stay outside. We'll actually communicate with the, if we beat the paramedics on the scene, we'll actually communicate with the victim through the doorway or through a window, and that's just because we're trying to protect our assets, you know. We're limited to just 25 members, and if we have something go through the fire department, you know, it, it's just try to reduce the exposure. If there's a medical emergency, we will gown up, go in and do the best we can, but we just make sure we're managing our resources and appropriately using them for the, what's needed. We have been able to dis, uh, secure additional PPE, so we're kind of in the pause and relaxing. I can sleep at night for that. Hopefully we can get back to drill pretty soon in July. Members are missing that. We're doing our Zoom meetings. They still enjoy that. We did our Washington County Fire Chiefs meeting, yeah, conference call. Been having the weekly conference calls with Washington County Emergency Management and Dispatch Center, also with regions. The Washington County Fair has been canceled. We did have one good event, and that was the Stillwater graduation parade Friday. It was very well received, so we did have that. I, I too want to thank my boss, Adam, and Chief Eastman for helping me out. As you know, with the events last week, the fire department was put in a very tough position on with what can we provide with our additional cities, so I relied on Adam's for his guidance and Chief Eastman to to help do the intel report and find out what we can do. And over the weekend, we did have weekly updates with Washington County EOC. Very much looking forward to things getting back to whatever the normal will be. With that, my safety tip is, again, stay positive, stay safe, and I'll stand for questions.
I had just written down the parade, and I wanted to thank you and the police department for your presence in that, for the Pony seniors, who have missed out on so many wonderful, fun opportunities to celebrate their achievements. And I know it meant a lot to the parents and to the students that both of our branches were represented, so thank you very much. Kind of nice to do something fun. So with that, back to you, Adam, or does any of, any council member have any additional questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. Adam?
Thank you, Chief. Chief Eastman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So since I put this out, we've done a lot of different things, so I'll briefly go over what you have in front of you. Our initial responses, self-initiated or calls are at 3,341 as of the date that I sent this to Adam and Sarah. Just our miscellaneous, continued extra patrols on Highway 95, businesses and residents. I personally worked on helping get the quote for the speed sign. And I helped Adam with, speaking with the businesses with delineating some outdoor areas. Met with them. We walked around their outside, tried to help them negotiate some things. I know Matt is gonna help them with picnic tables and maybe Adam's gonna get into that, or he did already. So Public Works is helping with that as well. And since this that I put out, and it, it's not in here, but I, I, I'm on a meeting three times a week generally, and it's usually about COVID. And it goes every, everything from COVID to DNR to the governor's orders, and that's with DPS. And a lot of the chiefs around Minnesota, and that's three times a week. Once a week is the chief's meeting. Today, because of some of the information you might have heard regarding possible protests in Stillwater. And then the commissioner, the Department of Corrections Commissioner publicly announced last night after some of the news outlets had, had heard some information about the former Minneapolis officer and where he was being held. The commissioner confirmed that he was being held at Oak Park Heights Prison. And since that and the information about possible protesters in Stillwater, we had a meeting with both the wardens from Oak Park, Stillwater today, the all of the surrounding agencies to include Stillwater, Oak Park Heights, myself, Sheriff Starry and Chief Mueller, as well as Doug Birkland. And that was just getting together and talking about, you know, National Guard requirements, getting our information out to each other. I wanted to note that in the short time over the past weekend here, I was able to secure helmets, gas masks, filters, batons from the DOC. They also gave us some ammunition should we run short. Officer Brittany Lepowski has been assigned to the SWAT team. She had interviewed, the only one interested at the time, and she's also a use-of-force instructor. She's currently with the SWAT team. She was out this past weekend. They did a lot of sitting around and moving around. They didn't, they weren't part of a large protest area. They were at a capital for a while. Everything was safe and fairly calm there. We currently have had, Saturday we had seven extra staff. Tonight we have almost everybody in, to include myself, because of what we heard. And I feel comfortable with the leadership of the surrounding chiefs, as well as our sheriff and his chief. And I'll, I basically stand for questions on that, although you can absolutely call my phone at any time if you hear anything, and I appreciate you vetting. Just over the weekend, I got a lot of emails from residents and a couple council members. It's good that if Adam can get the information first and vet it, because when we're right in the middle of things, I'm getting emails from the MAC, which is the Emergency Operations Center in Minneapolis, where the commissioner is and all of those people, and as well as the chiefs, surrounding chiefs. So it's nice to be able to use Adam, and he and I speak on a regular basis daily, and so he's up to speed, and I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for the chief?
Feel free. We're, we're teamed up in twos, so we always have two in a squad.
Think again, I can speak for probably the council and the community that.
I'm sorry, Mary, I missed it.
Oh, I just think that we can all probably, we want to express our gratitude to our lines of defense, as well as the Sheriff Starry and his team and our, our, you know, collaborating cities around us, so. It's been a very, very stressful time, and I really appreciate the staff keeping us informed and, and continuing to make every effort to keep us all safe, so thank you very much. And please be safe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Chief Eastman and I have been talking quite a bit about curfew. It's, you know, it's kind of a word that's being used by a lot of different agencies, as well as the governor's office. Bayport currently, for the public's information, Bayport currently is not under a curfew. We, we do recommend people to, you know, one, to stay home, to be safe with the COVID. That, that has not disappeared. That's still here. We've kind of forgotten about that, seems on the news as much, but also just at, at night, be home, be safe with your, your family and friends, loved ones. If you don't need to be out, just be safe. That's kind of what we've been doing. So I know our police has been, with the extra patrols, out, just making sure they're visible, but communicating that to people. So, but we are currently not under a curfew. So, but we are currently not under a curfew. If, for any reason, we would recommend that, the council would be the first to know, and you guys would take action on that, so. I just wanted to, in case anybody in the public, I know there's been questions that some of the other cities, you know, why isn't Bayport under curfew if other cities are? It's really been kind of all over the board, and each community is fairly unique in what their needs and what their situation is, so.
If the council doesn't have any other questions, I can move to the next department head. Okay, yes, Matt Klein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So the Public Works Department has been busy this month. Mowing has been really hectic, given that we haven't had a lot of summer help. The STS crews that we normally use for like Boulevard work, cleaning boulevards, mowing the cemetery have been kind of extremely limited due to COVID. Essentially, what they're doing is the crew leaders, who are still full-time employees, are actually coming in single cars and helping, and so they've actually mowed the cemetery a couple of times, so it's been very helpful, but again, limited. Also, working on hydrant flushing and street sweeping, those are kind of the, and utility locates. Obviously, people are still building stuff and putting stuff in the ground, so those four items are the big-ticket items right now. Some of the major work that's going on in town, the gas main replacement that was located on ninety-five through downtown is fairly complete. They're actually working on restoration. I know there was a couple of questions out there on when restoration would be. Some of the sidewalk was getting repaired today, if it was related to the gas main work, specifically at Second Street and Third Avenue North. So that's finishing up, although they will be installing more gas main, pretty much so from second, Third Avenue South, Second Avenue South to Fifth Avenue South. So there will be some disruption in people's yards, but from what I've saw, they've done a good job of communicating with all the residents. Couple of updates on Highway ninety-five. They're pretty much so still on schedule for the road. We will get another update tomorrow, as there's a construction meeting every Tuesday. I'll provide an update to the city website as far as the schedule, and so residents can go to our website to look at that and determine where it is. Right now, they're working mostly on the east side, so that's a lot of sidewalk work and curb and gutter work, and then lights on the east side. We've been moving along with the water main work and some of the sewer main work, and so everything seems to be on schedule for that. Seasonal positions, I'm happy to say that we'll have one of our seasonal staff come in here around June eleventh, so we'll have some more staff on to hopefully take some burden away from as much as what we're doing right now. Flower baskets, just provide an update on that. Obviously, we're probably not putting flower baskets out on ninety-five this year, given the current conditions, so we've actually installed some hangers on the parking lot near NJ, the city parking lot near NJ Cafe, and then we've also doubled up the hangers on Fifth Avenue, and so that accounts for almost probably eighty percent of the flower pots or the flower baskets that we hang. Some more might be going into the actually City Hall parking lot and maybe by City Hall. I'm open to other suggestions, too. We probably have about maybe somewhere between five to seven left over after we've doubled up everything on Fifth Avenue and the parking lot by NJ's. And then finally, just an update on the playground equipment at Lakeside. That will be installed probably June eighth and ninth, and then depending on when we can get woodchips and get them placed, after that, it'll be open to the public. Hopefully, we can get woodchips the same week that it's installed, but I'll have to give them a call, most likely tomorrow, to figure that out. I'm open for questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Yeah, on Fifth, those great big concrete planters, do we plant those as well?
So we do not plant, nope, we don't plant them. Usually, those are donated plants from actually the salon that is there. The owner of the salon usually maintains those.
Okay. Just a thought, and I was going to reach out to you privately about it, but to me, those gigantic planters look a little dated, and I, originally, there were, I believe there was trees there, and I'd love to see us get trees back in there. It would provide shade for some of the restaurants and people there to be able to sit outside on a really steamy day and provide some shelter for them, so just a thought.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why the trees were taken down, whether that was a county thing or whether they had just died. I don't have enough history to know that one. I know the county redid part of that sidewalk there a number of years ago.
Quite a ways, quite a while ago, so, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Matt?
No.
Okay, back to you, Adam. Thank you, Matt.
Assistant Administrator Taylor?
Thank you, Adam. Mayor, members of the council, the survey and wetland delineation work for the Land and Water Legacy Project will be complete within the coming weeks. Upon completion, staff can then proceed with identifying the best location for the temporary public access to the site, and then finalizing the access easement with Anderson Corporation. The Washington Conservation District also has commenced their work to develop a natural resource management plan for the site, which is a requirement of the conservation easement. This work will continue through much of the summer. Washington County recently provided an update on new policies and procedures for the upcoming elections this year. Further guidance is anticipated from the state and the CDC regarding polling place etiquette, but as of now, the key messages and recommendations include the following. The primary and general elections will be held as scheduled. Male or early in-person absentee voting is strongly encouraged to reduce the quantity of people voting in the polling place on election days and election workers needed to staff. Electronic poll pads or their election rosters will be used in the upcoming election, which will eliminate the need for paper signatures. The cities shall anticipate and prepare for supplying personal protection equipment for election staff in the polling place, possibly including plexiglass shields at voting checkpoints, and individual cities will be responsible for these expenses. Also, candidate filings will be accepted electronically, which is a pretty big change from the normal procedure. Other work and projects over the past month include the variance application that was presented earlier on tonight's agenda, continuation of rewriting the city's personnel policy ordinance and developing that employee handbook, responding to resident and contractor zoning inquiries for potential non-projects, and completing plan review on twelve permit applications. I've also been coordinating with the Minnesota Land Trust on conveyance of the remaining outlets in the third and fourth additions and inspiration to be included in the conservation easement. Working on developing a preliminary draft of a revised city sign ordinance, which we've discussed over the past few years, and formatting the city's annual consumer competence water report for publication. And then finally, as mentioned earlier, assisting with the re-allocation of admin duties as a result of the vacant finance position. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah? All right, very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
And Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things I wanted to go over this evening in my report. We already discussed the temporary outdoor seating expansion. I, one of the things I wanted to have the council actually respond to is regarding the Bayport Park reservations, and I'm going to go, come back to that, so if you just be ready for that, but the, the city's reopening, that's something that we're, we're working on, obviously working towards, is having the public, all the public facilities back to, and I'm kind of tired of the term new normal, so I don't want, I hope this isn't the new normal, but back to more open, more open integration with the public. So I've been working on a COVID-nineteen preparedness plan that we have to have in order to phase open our reopening until we're completely out of the state levels of quarantine. So I'm just going to read some of it and kind of touch on the high points. Our reopening will be a phased approach. The city of Bayport is committed to providing a safe and healthy workplace for all of our workers, as well as the public. And so with that, we're developing a preparedness plan in response to the pandemic. Our goal, obviously, is to mitigate the potential for transmission of COVID-nineteen in our workplaces, since that's where we can control, as well as our other public facilities. That does require full cooperation of our workers, management, and the public. We obviously can't control people who come into our facilities or interact with our equipment, but it, everything would work better with more compliance, obviously. Our, in my opinion, our workers are our most important assets, and we went over our audit tonight, and we've got all these hard assets, but as the council has touched on and staff has touched on tonight, you know, without, without staff, none of it works. Our buildings and our equipment can't run themselves yet. So we do care about the safety and health and keeping our employees working. As administrator, I am ultimately responsible for all the employees' safety. So we are using the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health guidelines and the federal OSHA standards related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The threshold for reopening the city facilities are, they're, they're based on the governor's, if everybody's familiar with the graphic and the dials, as those move through those different phases, the city will be following. It probably won't be on the same day or in line with it, but it'll be kind of one and a half step behind each phase. We are a very small city with a very small staff, and any impact can wreak havoc on staff being impacted. As I was, one of our topics just tonight was the number of administrative staff. Right now, we're, you know, we have four, actually three and a half full-time administrative staff, and if one or two of us go down or are unavailable or are required to be quarantined, that would have a drastic impact. And we just don't have the resources and the supplies, the equipment, to do the level of cleaning and the distancing in our, our facilities. So we're taking this a very reasoned and slow-phase approach, trying to be very considerate of how fast we can do this, but obviously, our goal and our, I think all of our desire is to get back to life as we knew it. The, the phase opening is more of a guideline rather than hard and fast rules, but as I said, as we go and take the guidance from the CDC and the MDH and OSHA, we will be adjusting those, those dials. Right now, we're currently in phase zero. That's where there's no, no public facilities are open to the public. As we move forward, the city hall is obviously the place where most of the public is going to come. Other than parks and shelters, both Public Works and the Fire Department, those are probably going to remain closed for the time being. I don't see those opening up anytime soon, just because there's no real need. If there's anything that does require an appointment or an in-person contact with either of those department facilities, we'll, we'll coordinate those, but as far as generally open to the public, that probably won't return anytime soon. So phase zero, all the critical and essential services are being provided. Staff, the majority of staff is working remotely if they can. Obviously, the essential and critical employees are doing that in person. Public Works, police, fire. Administrative staff, there's, our city hall is staffed every day with, with staff answering the phones, working on email, processing all the administrative work. But both Sarah and I are working remote at this time. Moving on to phase one, that's when the dial moves to social settings, small family gatherings, and we're, that's where we're moving, we're kind of in a, a near phase one that the governor's dials have moved to. We're getting close to that. Now that we're on June first, everything's kind of starting to open up. As I said, we're probably going to be maybe a week or two behind, so I'm looking at June fifteenth to be able to start taking appointments from the public. City Hall will still be closed, but we'll start meeting with people individually, scheduling those meetings in person if they're required. Now that, I mean, I'll also be candid, now that school is going to be out, there'll be less of a burden on parents. So those, scheduling those meetings will be a lot more flexible. The, again, the limited number of employees will be in the buildings at one time, and throughout all of this, the, the guidelines on social distancing and prevention methods, such as cleaning equipment and facilities, in order to limit or prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen, have to be in place, and so those will be adjusted as we move through the phases. The work-related meetings will be conducted virtually or in settings where we can follow the CDC guidelines on distancing. Currently, we are meeting as a complete staff via Zoom and over the telephone every week in admin. The city council meetings may be in, as we are tonight, may be done electronically with video conferencing. Obviously, we've had to suffer through the technical difficulties since this began, but for the most part, it's been relatively successful. I know it is not the most efficient as far as having to roll call votes and go through it, but when that does open up beyond the ten-person gatherings, we really would like to be meeting in person. But having gone through this, if there's anything where we need to move quickly and have a, have a video conference or video meeting, we now know, we're familiar with doing it. Again, the precaution guidelines will be taken, and we have criteria for all those. Phase two, that's when we, the social settings on the governor's dial moves to the places of worship. And that, what we're going to do is have limited hours or times for city hall to be open, just generally open to the public. We'll have additional screening for the administrative staff, and there'll be, obviously, of course, the CDC guidelines for all the prevention will be in place. The, we do expect the city council meetings to be held in person, so I'm expecting that to be kind of based on the current trend, July first, when we have the, our next city council meeting, I do expect to be in person, unless something drastically changes and we have to turn the dials back. As far as other meetings, all public meetings that are expected to generate attendance of up to fifty persons or less, we'll allow those. Throughout all of this, kind of related to the playgrounds and the public facilities, those will obviously be opening up more, just this last, as I think, well, it was a week and a half ago now, the playgrounds, we reopen those. At your own risk, because the guidance says, well, you shouldn't use them, but if you want to, here's how you should do it. You know, wash your hands. Again, throughout all this, you know, if you're sick, stay home, wash your hands, cough, sneeze into your, you know, control that, do the social distancing. When we eventually get to the phase three, and that's when the dial and the social settings reaches sporting venues or in-person school, it seems like a fantasy dream now to be able to get to that, but when we do get to that point, that's essentially, all city facilities will be open, and we'll be there. We'll still have whatever guidelines or requirements that are required for additional signage, workspaces to be set up certain way, whatever distancing and cleaning protocols are required. But that's going to be as close to the as normal or as life was. Um, but uh that's gonna be as close to the as normal or as life was um as we can be. And so there, there may be additional precautions that we'll have to implement at that time, but that is a that's a place that we are all looking forward to getting to. Um, we do have, uh, in the plan, we do have screening for employees exhibiting signs. Luckily, we're small staff. Um, we really don't need to, I won't be going over those tonight, um, but we do have some guidance based on the league and um what other cities have uh done. And then we we do, the plan does, and I'll send this to the council, it does have all of the other practices and information that we have to have actually in writing as to how everything will be staffed, um, the uh facilities uh cleaned. And uh, so with that, um, we we're, we're lucky in that we're, all of our services are being met. Um, we haven't really received any negative feedback. Um, I I want to thank the public uh in that regard. Um, they've been very uh providing grace and understanding uh to the city. Um, but we also, I I'm, I'm impressed and I'm proud that we have been able to provide all those services to the public uh with really out. Um, it's just a new uh new format for doing some of the business, but the people's business is being done. And those services are being provided, so. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, so like I said, the the next two weeks uh will be moving into that um appointments and then uh by July first, I do, or the beginning of July, I do expect us to uh be, have City Hall open at least uh partially. That's their current expectation, so.
Um, I know we've been at it, you know, you know, close to three hours here, but um, how is a July council meeting gonna look from a uh PPE standpoint or social distancing, or is it gonna be uh back to normal? Um,
Well, the uh, assuming that the the guidelines loosen and we can have um kind of as uh Chief uh Isinger indicated that we may be able to have up to twenty-five people um in a gathering, it's kind of the expectation. That is a real we're, we're waiting to hear what that can look like. Uh, it may need to be a combination. I haven't really figured out the logistics of that yet. Um, obviously, not all the staff needs to be in the, in the room, in the room. Um, but to have the, the council and we we may not have it open to the public. We may have the in-person meeting for the council and staff and have it televised. Um, but we're, we're under no legal obligation to provide public comment on, unless it's a public hearing. Um, and so we can solicit tho- those comments on the agenda ahead of time or allow, um, you know, allow some type of electronic um app medium as well. Um, but our chambers, you're probably familiar with the size of it. Um, our current, as you can see, this, this group, our current number is about fifteen um, twelve to fifteen people um for a full complement uh city council meeting. Um, so we're over that ten, but we're under the twenty-five person. Um, so we, I don't have the details of that yet, but that's what we'll be determining over the next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions for Adam?
Okay. With that, I'll move on to the parks discussion. Um, if the council recalls.
Adam, did that conclude everything that you wanted to cover?
No, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Yes.
At the la- and the, at the May meeting, um, the council authorized or confirmed that we would cancel all reservations for the June um, June reservations. Uh, and at that time, we said that we'd come back about the July um reservations at the June meeting. Well, we're there now. Things are starting to opened up. Um, going forward, at least for the time being, uh, we, the beach house is still closed, the nature center is not being rented out. Um, the, the beach itself has not, uh, the state has not authorized opening those yet. Um, I do know that there's reports of both in Bayport and other areas that beaches are um being used. Uh, so we're trying to educate people on that. Um, the weather obviously is well, it it's getting very nice, you know, summer's here and so people want to be outside. Um, the playgrounds themselves are open and the park shelters are open, uh, but we have not been uh res- reserving the park shelters currently. Um, now that we're in June, we did have about, as I, if you recall, about uh fifteen to twenty cancellations for um some of them were park shelters, some of them were for the beach house. Um, I I guess I'm looking for some guidance from the council as to we are taking reservations for July, um, but we have not gone back and started reserving them in June. At this point, with the current guidelines, where the state's basically saying, um, you know, it's, we don't recommend it, it's use at your own risk, but we're not gonna stop you. Um, we've kind of been following that in the county, that's kind of where the county's been. Um, does the council want to allow reservations for the rest of June or keep it just kind of first serve, first come, first served? Um, I I do foresee some of the people who have reserved it, they, they may be upset that we're now reopening it. Obviously, the information changes faster than we can act. Um, but I guess staff's recommendation is to go ahead and re, take the, keep the reservations for July. Um, allow people to use them in June, uh, but not necessarily res- make reservations, at least not in the next two weeks. Maybe that June fifteenth, anything after that. Um, we'd allow reservations, but
I personally, I guess, Adam, I would like to see you hold off until at least mid-June to see what's gonna happen here. And let them, use them if they're down there. Maybe don't reserve them.
But I think when we do, if we do open it up, if we canceled some people, I think we should go to them first to see if they're interested in. You know what I'm saying? The people
We, we were gonna do it.
We discussed that and some of the events probably needed more time to plan. It wasn't just like a picnic that they were just getting on the books. Um, there was planning that went ahead, went into it, and so we wanted to make sure they had enough time in advance to reschedule that of some oth- some other way. Um, so it, you know, it's, there's, there's no great answer. Um, but yeah, that would be depending on when we reopen them, we would want to reach out to them and see if they're uh still on first.
Might be best to just keep it closed through June, but I can hear somebody uh texting or something. If you guys hear that. I mean, I'm running out of battery on my phone. I don't know if you saw me disappear, but it was my battery saying you're out of here. So you're killing both of my devices here, Adam.
I People's business.
Might be time to wrap up.
Yeah.
I I defer to others. I I I'm not an expert in this area, so um I would want to make sure that if we did make any changes, that we did touch base with everyone that had reservations, just to say, hey, things just look like they're opening up. You know, what are your plans? Um, I think that would be a a good courtesy to, to have those conversations, but I think at least until mid-June to the beginning of July, I'm, I'm okay with being a little bit overly cautious.
Okay.
But I, I, I defer.
I'm in the cautious approach camp, I guess.
Yeah, that, that, that works for staff. That's, that's, that would be staff's preference. Um, I know both Chief Eastman and uh Chief Isinger um and Public Works, every, pretty much the unanimous staff would prefer to have it that way. Um, just with we don't know what the next two weeks are gonna be like.
Exactly.
Balancing back and forth is, actually creates more work and more frustration for both the public and us, so. Uh, very good. That's, that's what I need to know. So with that, I have, I'm open for any other questions, then I'll uh give you back the rest of your warm summer night.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay. John Perotti, thank you for hanging in with us as well.
Yeah, he sat quiet.
And of course, our friends at the Cable Commission, so thank you. Um, all right. If there's no other business, uh, thank you, Adam, for everything and and the comprehensive update and and staff again, sincere thanks and council weathering through this um digitally. We're doing okay, so uh would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Can I just make
Go ahead and show.
Quick things before. So I don't know if you noticed, but the Loop Trail opened today, which was pretty exciting. So just thought we'd get that word out, because I didn't know it opened today until yesterday, so. And then um the farmer's market for the, that the Bayport community actually puts on is happening. It will be in Barker's Alps and the first date is slotted for June twenty-nine. All right. So, and they're gonna have, you know, rules in place and, you know, making sure it's safe. That's all I wanted to say. So now I, my move, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
And thank you, John. Uh, Dow for the second, and um, Adam, do we need a roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Mayor St. Aris.
Aye.
Izal.
All right. Good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Good night. Stay safe.
Good night.